I would like to ask, it is 6:03, it is February 1st. I would like to call the president of the Board of Education to order. We will go until 7:00 and then we will party with our next meeting. And so, Ken, there you are. And just to let people know, I think we are going to actually be through with the book tonight.
If we can get to all of them, and then...
Oh wow, there you are. Wow.
Shoot. And then the work of the board will be to take a look at percentages and what we want to see continue to be in our, in the budget and to give some direction to Superintendent Austin and her staff. So I am going to now have Ken lead us into our next part.
All right. We are going to go to page 5-76. I'm going to share it on the screen.
Please, please, use your microphones close to you, they won't be able to hear. You've got to be in front, right directly in front.
Right in front. All right, there we go. 5-76, and this is Teaching and Learning. And we're ready to go. So 5-76 shows the FTEs and teaching and learning. We have the data manager position. We also have grades 6 through 12 curriculum coordinators. There are three half-time teachers, so three times .5, so it's 1.5 FTEs. And that's what's showing up here in one clerical position. If we go down to the expenses, you'll see for salaries, we have a overall 3% increase. The 6 through 12 curriculum coordinators are per union contract, and the other positions are at a 2% increase. Employee benefits, up 3.1%. No change to other purchase services, which is travel. Under supplies, professional materials is up $4,000. This is the cost for books and other professional materials used by the teaching and learning group. And then finally, under dues, $1,500, no change from the prior, from the prior year budget. And just so you know, dues are CLC, which I think the Library Consortium, and ASCD, I forget what that is.
Association Supervision Curriculum Development.
Thank you. Total for this function is 392,478, posing a 4% increase, almost $15,000.
I'm going to recognize Liz, and then Rita, and then Beverly.
Quick question for you. Do you hear me? Is this on?
I don't know if you're...
I can hear you.
Okay. If you can hear me from here, but I don't, can you guys hear me?
Do this, Liz.
Yes.
She says she can.
Rita said she can hear.
Okay. Are the curriculum coordinators, are they paid through completely 100% their salary through the admin? Or is, do they have like a portion in admin and a portion in teaching?
They're half and half. So they, they're basically, I think it's a 40/60 split because they do some administrative work even in the summertime, so they have a few summer days. So they're basically a day that they teach and a day that they do their coordination as an administrator. They're under the admin bargaining unit.
So, and I'm trying to understand, are these, the curriculum coordinators, there's three of them?
Humanities, ELA, and STEM.
And STEM, yeah. Okay. This, in this part right here, the budget, which is 181,586 for FY '24, that just shows their administrative part of their job?
Correct.
Correct.
And then in the regular teacher salary, it shows the other part of their job?
Correct.
You'll see a .5 teacher.
Exactly.
Okay. Do you think that needs to be clarified someplace, please? Because I think in the, we need to make sure that we're very clear about where they're being paid.
We'll put a curriculum coordinator explanation in here.
That would be great.
Yep.
And just another, a quick question for you. Ken, you said that this was, I don't remember how you started the whole conversation, but I was looking for support services, central office and teaching and learning?
Yes.
Is that how it's, maybe I'm just being picky, but I was, I was listening for support services and I didn't hear that. So does this have to be renamed, or does this have to be, just pull those words, those letters out? I don't know. I was just listening for that and I didn't hear it, so.
What were you thinking of when you saw supporting services? Were you thinking of special education?
Yeah. I was not thinking, I didn't, I hadn't, my eye hadn't scanned down, and I went, "Supporting services, oh, okay." You know, and I was thinking maybe central office, because I saw the CO, and I was thinking, "Oh, the people at central office, not necessarily the district, the curriculum coordinators and the data manager." So I'm just, wanted to make sure we're clear.
We can certainly update it so it's clear that this is teaching and learning.
I just think it needs to pop out a little bit better. It's just my opinion.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Rita, and then Beverly.
Thank you. I would like to know who the data manager is and what exactly are the duties of the data manager? That has an assistant also and an admin staff?
Well, the, we, as you know, Tom Lonsdale had been our student data manager and took another position through LEARN. And so we have gone through the process and we've hired Lauren Cursini, which will, she will start next week. We can share with you, the job description was, which was really very similar to what Tom had followed. And when we first introduced the concept of having a student data manager, I know we had worked closely with the board to get that position through and to look at the job description. So I'd be happy, we were just actually pulling that up along with the posting because we're going to be orienting her very soon. We're looking forward to having her. So I can definitely get that out to you.
Okay. For the couple of months that we didn't have a data manager, that savings, what would that be put towards, Ken?
So this position was paid primarily through here. It is supported a little bit through the ARPESR, so...
I would say that the work of our central office team has really supported that, including your superintendent and assistant superintendent. That was what I did a lot of as an assistant superintendent. But I would say that the savings probably are going, you know, I don't know what they would be going towards, but we do have a septic issue that we've had to take care of a little bit. And so I'm sure there are things operationally that we've been able to take care of that would have been more difficult to take care of had we not had that.
Yeah, there are some items where we're over budget, such as that, that it would be put towards that.
Okay. Well, if there's any way that this could be reduced, this department, I would appreciate seeing if you could find some savings there. I mean, to have these curriculum coordinators getting paid under the admin contract as well as the teacher's contract, it's a little confusing. Where do they get their benefits? Do they, do their benefits with the administrator's contract, or with the teacher's contract? Are they 50/50, 60/40, if it's every other day? It's, I find this a little confusing, the way it's situated here. And then you don't really get, like Liz said, a good picture of the salaries of these people.
Thank you, Rita. Beverly?
Well, no. I mean, I really wanted a reply, Ken.
Oh, okay.
I said, "How are you going to fix this so that you really see what the salaries are of these three people? Are they in the admin union? Are they in part of the teachers? What really are their salaries?"
They are part of the bargaining unit of the, of the AGSA. So they follow that contract, but one day, because the salary is not under the contract because it's really, it's half of a teacher's salary at their step, and then it's also half of an administrative salary. I think it was at the dean rate, or the lower rate.
Correct.
Rate. So we can absolutely put it in the narrative here, and we can put it in the narrative where it shows up at Fitch High School, or at the, I think we actually do have it there too. We have it under the Groton Middle School and the Fitch High School.
Yeah.
But this was also a decision made...
Look, I want to know why, who made the decision to have them split and be under the admin contract as opposed to the teacher?
That was the Board of Education. Mike Grenier had presented this concept, I think about three, four years ago when we began. And so it was presented then, but we can certainly give you more...
But I was curious if we could reverse that as opposed, and you know, I just want to know which would be the most cost-saving? Keeping them under admin, or having them under the teacher's contract?
They do evaluate teaching staff, and that was part of the responsibilities that we were really looking for? So that, if, you can't do that unless you're an administrator.
I realize that, but I mean, we have quite a few administrators in our middle school and our high school for evaluations. I mean, there's an overabundance of administrators, as far as I'm concerned. And then you have these other three people doing administrative work, where our curriculum coordinators, at one time, when Liz was there, they were under the administration, but we've had other times where our curriculum coordinators have been part of, part of the teaching contract. So I just would, you know, I just don't want to see so many administrators evaluating, to me, it just seems like an overkill. But that's just my thought, and hopefully you can resolve this in some way and reduce these salaries going forward. Thank you. That's it.
Beverly, and then Liz.
Thank you, Kim. My thoughts are with Rita and Liz, so I'm not going to, I'm just going to say ditto to what they said. The curriculum coordinators, what subject areas are they coordinating? I heard you say ELA.
English Language Arts, Humanities, which was what Carmita had done, and now Laura Johnson is doing. So that's your Social Studies and World Language. And then STEM, Caitlin Crowley is doing really Science and Mathematics and Engineering. She's really got a full load.
What was the second one, Susan? I couldn't hear you clearly.
The second one was Humanities, which was World Language and...
Oh, Humanities.
Social Studies, right? Yep.
Okay. And the clerical staff, they work not only with the data manager, but with the curriculum coordinators?
Yes. It's, it's a superstar that we have in Teaching and Learning who's been there for quite a while. And she really, she does, she, she interfaces, she works really closely with Phil Piazza, with the student data manager, sometimes with me. So she really wears many hats.
Okay. And then when you hire the data manager, do you try to hire them like we do, I don't know if you still do, the principals and the assistant principals with 10% or whatever percent lower, and then bring them up in a couple of years?
Well, they always started a starting, yes. They started a starting administrative salary and then, like you said, have an opportunity to move forward.
All right. So you, do you hire them at a lower salary and then move them up?
Right, at a starting salary. And this is someone who has a 12-month job, so the student data manager doesn't have a 10-month job, you know, and then with summer days, they really are around the clock. So they are really a 12-month position.
Well, I think what Beverly is getting at is that when, if it's a new administrator to this position, for this person, we hire them 10% lower than the beginning administrative salary, because they hadn't had the experience. So that, I think that's what Beverly was trying, trying to say, that it's not, it shouldn't be the starting administrative salary, it should be 10% less than that, and then you brought them up as time, you know, went on.
That, that's right, Rita. That's what I'm saying.
I understand that, yes.
I got it.
I understood that. That's what I understood it to be.
What was the answer, Susan?
Yes, that's what I understood your question to be. That's why I said yes. That's what we did.
Okay.
You didn't, you're not doing it 10% less, you're doing it at the first step.
I, I don't have the figures in front of me, Lori's not here, but I, that's what I understood was negotiated.
All right. Could you give us the correct answer to that question?
I, as soon as I get Lori back, I can ask her the question.
Okay.
Liz?
I just want to, you know, I don't, is my mic on?
I don't know.
Yes.
Okay. I want to clarify, when I was teaching at Fitch, my salary was, and I was administrator, my salary was split between the administrative union as well as the teaching units, because I was doing both. So I just want to clarify, that's nothing new, that's something that has, has been past practice and was what I experienced way back in from 2000, when I was hired until 2012, when I, and then I joined the teachers ranks and my salary was adjusted to the teacher's.
I, I said, yes, I said, except for when Liz was the coordinating.
Oh, I thought you said...
That I, it was before, I was thinking of before that time.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this page?
No.
All right. Hearing none, but let's move on.
Okay. We're moving on to 5-78. This is Function 2202, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. We have a description. The stipend for this, for this year and next year are being paid out of, it should say ARPESR, A-R-P-E-S-R, there's a typo which we'll fix under the changes. On page 5-79, this is, we're anticipating spending this similarly to how we're utilizing it this year, with $11,600 under Instructional Improvement Services and $3,400 under Professional Materials, for a total of $15,000. No, no increase over this year's budget.
Rita?
My question is, if you look at 322, in '21, '22, it was $3,000. Then last year went up to $11,000, and this year it's going up. So when you say there's no increase, to me, that's, there really is an increase of quite a bit. Each one of those lines, you know, diversity, the last one, total supplies was $10,950, and now we're up to $15,000. So that's a third more. I know you're saying, "Oh no, there's no increase," but there really was quite a large increase from two years ago. So, you know, it just, to me, I always find it a little disheartening when you say zero increase from the year before, when if you look the year before that, there's a huge increase.
Yeah, just to...
My comment.
To clarify, 2022, we utilized ARPESR to, to fund some of the other DEI initiatives. So that's why 2022 was a little bit lower than, than what we're budgeting for this year and next year.
'21, '22 was lower because you used more funding?
Funding, yes, from ARPESR.
So you're just looking at FY '23, which is the current year, to FY '24?
I like to look at the budget across, you know?
I know. It's always good to go the year before, but when we calculate the percent increase, we're calculating it from the prior, from this current year to next year.
I know, I understand that, Susan.
All right. I'm just making sure.
All right. I'm going to recognize...
Yeah, I understand.
I'm going to recognize Beverly.
Kim, can you give me an example, or a couple of examples of Instructional Improvement Services? What are you talking about with that?
I could talk a little, I could talk a little bit about that. Generally, that's the work that we're doing to, to, you know, update our curriculum, do equity audits, establish our equity teams in our schools. I think, you know, if you go back two years, a lot of the work that we were doing in DEI was the self-reflection and the self-study, which probably didn't require a lot of funds. And now we're actually doing the work where we're, we're bringing in different literature that our teachers are studying to become more culturally relevant instructors. And we're also bringing in, you know, some professional development in district to work with our teachers. Again, a lot of it is geared on, on really revamping our curriculum and doing those audits to our curriculum through an equity lens, as well as trying to build the skills in our teachers to really be more culturally relevant in their practices. Does that help?
You know what? There's so much of an echo, I didn't really get what you said. I, I'm sorry, but that's okay. That's okay. Just, can you just send me a little note, what, what you're talking about?
I could definitely do that.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
Certain people, there's a real echo, so it's hard to hear.
It would be helpful when the person who talks that you say is the echo, so that we can, we can locate the mic.
Well, Phil's was the most.
I'll just bring it closer.
Okay. That would be great. Bev, do you have any more questions?
No, if he just, if Phil just sends me the explanation by email, I'm good.
Okay. I think he said he was going to. All right, we're going to move on.
All right. Moving on to page 5-80. This is Function 2210, Improvement of Instruction. This is where, let's see, Support Materials for Teachers, Professional Resources, and New Instructional Materials, Staff Development, and Training. On page 5-81, line 101, that is the cost for writing curriculum instruction. We're anticipating less, less need for that next year, thus that reduction of $15,000. We are anticipating an increase, a continued increase, under line 224, Graduate Credit Courses. Teachers are certainly taking a chance to do extra classes, so we're finding that we need to increase this line item. So we have an increase of $9,000 under, under line 224.
We can't really hear, Ken.
Oh. Is that better?
Yeah, if it's in and out.
Okay.
So that sounds a little better.
Under Purchase Services, line 322, Instructional Improvement Services, we have an increase of $67,700. This line funds our in-district...
Hey, Ken, Ken, that says $67,000.
$67,700, yep.
Okay. I thought you said $6,700.
I apologize. This, this line funds our in-district PD days, as well as funding our district DEI initiatives and, and additional items. I have ELL as well, is that true?
Yeah, and this, this also ties in with some of the things I was talking about previously, the DEI, all the strategic initiatives that we have in place, including working with Dr. Cherry Paul, Cornelius Minor, Dr. Kim Parker, who we, you know, we spoke about each of those in the past. If we want to continue that work, you know, unfortunately, you know, their, their fees constitute an increase here.
Point of order?
I'm sorry.
We're using a lot of acronyms.
You're going to need to talk...
We're using, we're using a number of acronyms that are familiar to us, but may not be familiar to people who watch online. So when we use an acronym, could you please define what the acronym means? And if it's something like Teaching and Learning, which has its own embedded meaning, perhaps explain it so that people can really understand what we're doing? Thank you.
All right. Going, continuing to go down the page, we have an increase of 5.5% under Travel for Workshops and Conventions, $1,450. Under Supplies, an increase under Computer Software of $22,908. This is being driven by Universal Screener that we need to put in place, mandated, state-mandated software. And so for the total for Improvement of Instruction, an increase of $85,127, 30.6%
I'm going to recognize Dean, Liz, and then Beverly.
All right, thank you. Dr. Piazza, the... I'm usually loud enough, but okay. Dr. Piazza, the three individuals you named before, what were they again? Who were they again, I should say? Cornelius Paul, Kim Parker? Dr. Cherry Paul. Cherry or Jerry? I'm sorry. Her first name is Sonia, and then Cherry Paul is a hyphenated last name. Cornelius Minor? Yep. And Dr. Kim Parker. Okay. And then just to add to that, just because Ken had mentioned it, for our English Language Training as well for our teachers, it's a Dr. Ferraro. She's from, Marissa Ferraro, she's from Southern Connecticut State University. Okay. And you, you said, well, you know, the number's going up, but that's driven by their, we have to pay them fees. I'm sure they don't work for nothing. Can you tell me what it is we expect to pay these people? Well, we're, I'm currently gathering those to extend the work. And then we're, now we hope to be able to, we've established some really great relationships with all four of these individuals, and so we're hoping to sort of work with them. They've had a positive experience in our district. It's been positively received by our staff, who are anxious to continue the work, which isn't always the case. So that, that's, those are coming in now, so I'm trying to, I can't provide those to the board as I get them. Okay.
Their work is really around literacy, reading and writing across the disciplines. So really taking what we've learned about the teaching of reading and writing in the elementary, middle school, and the high school, they go, they are at different levels. So, so and you, Cherry Paul works for elementary, with the elementary teachers. Cornelius Minor works for the middle school, had been their staff developer when TC, when they were, had TC with them. And, and then the Dr. Kim Parker is with the ELA teachers right now at the high school. So really, with ELA, Social Studies, Science, really digging into the teaching of reading and writing across the disciplines. Things like informational reading and writing, close reading, vocabulary, some of the fundamentals. And I think the pandemic didn't help us with some of those things, so it's been really a driver for getting, you know, really getting our instruction powerful to help support our students.
Would you say the 86-2 that's been allotted for this line item is mostly going to these consultants, partial, a third? Can you guess at all? Most. Most of it. Okay. Thank you.
And the average that you get for a consultant like that, they come into the district at least a half a dozen or more times, and then they Zoom with them every month and, and work with them all the way along. So those fees tend to be between $14,000 and $20,000, and that's what we've been seeing across the board, even with Teachers College.
Okay. Thank you.
Liz?
Oh, I just have, it just seems to me like there's this huge, huge increase, which there is, of $67,000. Were they doing this, were they doing this business, or they were doing what they were doing for us, but only, we had only budgeted for $18,500? I mean, how did we get what we were, how were we getting these benefits from these people? Were we not paying them? Were we being, paying them through a grant? And all of a sudden, we go up 338%? It's, it seems to me a lot to swallow, so I'm just kind of trying to figure it out.
And I think it's a combination of both. We were paying some through, through grants. We were also in the, in the first steps of our work, so it didn't require, you know, multiple visits, maybe, you know, for example, Dr. Cherry Paul spent one, is spending one day in each of our elementary schools. So, you know, and plus she had one day with administrators, so we paid for six days. The next level of work, you know, she's had, she has ideas for the next level of work, but it could include up to 10 days or 15 days in the district. So, so that would obviously affect, affect the cost. So it's a combination of the work increasing and getting a little bit deeper into each building, as well as maybe the, the funds not being able to come from those grants anymore.
Correct, yep.
I just find that we have highly trained teachers, and I just feel like we're having, we're adding consultants here. It just doesn't seem like our teachers should be able to do this.
So this is why they're so good, is we've had this embedded coaching all along, and they are wonderful teachers. Our teachers are spectacular. But especially during COVID, where kids have lost some learning, it was really imperative that they did have some people that they could rely on to ask questions of, to really support them, and to continue that embedded coaching. So it's, you know, these consultants are very good at that, and have been very helpful, and the teachers have given us very positive feedback about them.
I'm just concerned that this is maybe, you know, we're now out of, we're not out of COVID, but we're back into school, and I'm not sure about this expenditure. Matthew, I need to recognize Bev, Rita, and Van Dean.
Thank you.
Bev?
Thank you, Ken. I have the same concerns on that line, three-two-two. Ken, is it possible that you can tell us, through board notes or whatever method you want to use, how much we spent a year on consultants? How much do we spend a year on consultants?
Okay.
I'll be right back, I gotta go.
Rita?
Yes, so I, my thoughts were the same as what Liz expressed, because I know we have an excellent staff, and I'm sure there are people on staff that could do some of the things that these consultants are doing, but I would like to see that figure at least cut in half, set over 385%. Maybe do more Zoom meetings, not have these people travel into the district. Just, it has to be reduced. I mean, we have to find savings in this budget, and maybe that's one of them. That's my suggestion.
Thank you, Rita. Matthew?
I hope this is working, yes. I've been listening to my colleagues, and I've heard a couple of different perspectives from administration and colleagues, and so my understanding of what I heard is that a large part of this is powered by the need to compensate for the effects of COVID. So my question is, do you see this as a recurring charge year after year? Do you see this as for one or two or three years? Do we make up the ground? How do you envision this strategically?
Good question.
Well, in terms of instructional software and the different things like that, I think those costs are hopefully not going to be there on an ongoing basis. We're continually looking at what's being used and what we're having the most success with, and evaluating those, so we can make some changes there and some cuts there. In terms of the DEI work, you know, to be honest with you, I mean, to me, that doesn't have as much to do with COVID as to sort of where we need to get to as a district. You know, I think we'd like to think that we have all the skills we need right now, but I think, you know, even when we polled the staff, you know, like I said, that first year or two that we've been doing this work was a lot of self-evaluation. And I think the staff has come to their own conclusion, our own conclusion, that there's still a lot that we need to learn. Now, whether or not we have to get the, you know, the platinum package that some of these people are offering, absolutely, we're going to have to do our due diligence and see what we can afford and what we, you know, balance that with what we need. But again, you know, anytime we're talking DEI, I don't like to say it's, oh, it's a two-year plan, you know, because as we know, it's something that we have to weave into our culture, and that hopefully eventually we get to that point where we don't need the training as much, and so that's when the costs will dissipate a bit. Does that make sense?
May I follow? Thank you. I concur with you completely. The DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Sorry.
Are things that we need to do on a continuing basis. I think the question that I heard raised had to do with the consultants' fees, and as with any new enterprise, there tends to be a pretty sharp vertical curve in the initiation phase, which then levels off to be a maintain and keep things running smoothly. Can you give us any sense of your view of the horizon on this? Because that's what I'm hearing my colleagues say, is it seems pretty expensive, and if it goes up another 20% next year and another 15% the year after, I think that's the concern. So if you could speak to that, I'd be grateful.
Well, I guess I'll use our DEI committee's, you know, five-year, I think it was a five-year plan, which we're currently in year three, so next year would be year four. So I think the goal was to make ourselves as much, you know, self-sufficient, or, you know, to build our own capacity over those five years, so these would, you know, lessen over the years, so at least a couple more years. But then again, I don't see, you know, like I said, these fees, you know, I do question the area of education I've gotten into when I see some of these public speaking fees and consulting fees, because they can be astronomical. I think it's a combination of finding somebody that's affordable and has the effects over staff that these three seem to have had over their first year. And like I said, all I could do is promise you that we'll do our best to negotiate with them and use our good graces that we've sort of built with them to get it down to a manageable cost.
Well, I look forward to next year's proposal and expect it to be moving towards those shared goals.
Yeah, thanks.
If I could wrap this piece up, what I hear some of us on the board state is that we need to hear what the strategic plan is around this use, though we all, or we all see the benefit of having our staff have professional development in this area, and I think that we're pretty excited about the fact that the staff seem very receptive of it. But not having a strategic plan in terms of what is our, what is the forward motion, and I believe that both, I think both Beverly and Rita and Liz spoke to that. And I think I'm just sort of reiterating what you're saying, Matthew. But also, if, to hear what Rita has to say is that we are going to have to start, like it's going to become the board's budget, and we are going to have to start making cuts in someplace. And so if this is something that's very, that, I guess we want to hear, I hear what you're saying, but I want to know why this is really important. So maybe if we could star this, in that when we start to have our deliberations about our budget, that we can have, we can have more information so we can kind of take a look at it. I don't know if that's a good wrap-up about what people are saying, but that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Ken.
I'm going to recognize Dean. So Dean, if you could grab the microphone, that would be great.
Sure, I'll make it short. We don't all agree, and I'm not excited.
Okay.
Can I just get a point of clarification? Is this item for DEI? I have down in my notes inter-district PD, district DEI initiatives, and ELL. So, I mean, is it, is it all combined, or is it there's certain people doing certain things?
So I would love to have it written out, so that we know what this is about, so that we can then have a better conversation. So if we could tag that and have a, because I think there's too many questions, so let's get a little bit more of a narrative behind that. I think that would be helpful.
No problem.
Thank you. We have about 15 minutes before seven o'clock. Ken, in the pacing that we're doing, how are we doing? Do you see that we?
I don't think we're going to get through all of it.
Do you think that we could do technology, page 598 to 99, and then see where we are?
That sounds like a good.
So you guys, I'm just looking at pacing, and that's why we're only on February 3rd. So I think we're going to drop down to that, and that's going to be 598. Ken, I'm not trying to take your thunder, you're on.
So you're skipping the district administrators?
I just don't think we're going to have enough time to talk about that in 15 minutes, but this looks like a better chunk of time.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, yeah, we're going to go to 598. This is function two-five-four-zero, computer support services or technology. Let's see, we have FTEs, we have the director, we have three technicians that work out of central office, we have five technicians that are based in the schools, and one clerical. If we go down to five-nine-nine, the costs, salaries, the technicians are per contract, and overall for salaries, a 2.4% increase. Employee benefits up 3.8%. Under professional services, we have line three-three-one. This is our costs for consultants for software implementations. We have an increase of 5,300 over this year's budget. Computer network services, an increase of 13,362. This is, these are the costs incurred in order to run a network, get internet, and supply that to all the schools. Total amount for purchased services is 1,92,600, an increase of 10.7%. Next line down, purchased property services, repair of equipment. This is repair of, or the maintenance for the copiers and the other equipment that we have throughout the buildings. Line four-four-one is the lease payments for those copiers. That's an increase of 10,000 as well. So total for this, for purchased property services is a $20,350 increase. Next section down, purchase services, telephone costs, increase of $15,000. This is reflective of our new telephone system, as well as our new cellphone program in tandem. So that's an increase of 14.6% overall for purchased services. Supplies, a decrease in computer supplies of $7,500, but an increase in computer software of 65,029. Just to make everyone aware, we do supplement the computer software with the DOD Supplemental Impact Aid Grant. We've done that for the past few years. Overall for supplies, up 32.3%. And under equipment, we have an increase of 17,800. So total for computer support services, an increase of 154,000, overall 10.1%.
Ken, just a general question.
Could you please talk into my microphone?
I'm doing it now. Ken, this is a general information question for me. With regard to this particular item, you said we'd used some supplemental grant funds from the items. Where we use supplemental grant funds for a given item? I'm presuming, dangerous word, that some grants are specific, and we have no choice as to how we can use them, while other grants are more fungible, meaning we can assign things from one to another. So, am I correct that far?
Yes.
Okay, so when we're talking about using grant money, could we indicate if that's a mandatory allocation of the grant, or if there's some fungibility available for us to evaluate? Thank you.
Okay.
Beverly?
Thank you. Ken, can you explain the increase in the computer software line?
Yeah. Bev, if you don't.
My second question would be too. Can you tell me the process of when you repair equipment, and then when you replace it? Is it like, in five years, we don't repair it anymore, we replace it? Is there a process on how you figure all that out?
Bev, if you don't mind, I'm going to take this one. So the majority of the increase in line six-twelve is related to, we installed two brand-new firewalls, which are the base, the main gatekeeper, if you will, that connects our entire school system and all of the networks associated with it, with the outside world. So really, that was a long overdue upgrade for security reasons, and really throughput, because we're continuing to see every year more and more bandwidth needs from our staff, from our students, and so forth. The second piece to that was, again, in the security category, we are now required by our insurance provider for, so that we have cybersecurity insurance coverage, we've had to turn on two-factor authentication, and a lot of that reflects the licensing as well for that. Two-factor authentication, or 2FA, most, if not all of you, have probably used it. If you connect to amazon.com or Facebook, what have you, and it sends you a six-digit code to your cellphone to verify you are who you are, and someone else isn't masquerading as you and using your account elsewhere, we've had to put in place those things. One, I think it's good practice, but two, it is now a requirement for us to be able to carry cybersecurity insurance for that. Regarding your second question, Bev, the, we try to carry, especially hardware, we will use it as long as we can feasibly, that it provides value in the classroom, and we need to determine that value based on, one, is it usable and in good shape for students and teachers to use, but two, can it also integrate with the software and services and the network that we have? So we very much do our due diligence to keep those moving on, but if the cost is, increases that value, or is more to repair than to replace, or buy new, we would go to new. Also taking into consideration, obviously, the programs that we want to integrate and implement with fidelity, so that we can do that. So that is typically how we do, we take it a case-by-case basis. We have teacher laptops, we have student laptops, we have student tablets, Promethean boards, et cetera, et cetera. Is that an additional question for that, Bev, or is that good?
No, that's it, Clint. Thank you very much, Clint.
Of course.
I'm going to recognize Rita and Van Dean.
Okay. Hi, Clint.
Hi, Rita.
I have a question. Do the schools feel as if they are supported with the five school-based technicians? Is that enough support?
Uh.
Are they spread too thin, is what I'm asking you?
I think we have a good balance right now. We are always, we are, we have been continuing to increase the reliance on technology. There's not a department, there is not an activity, there's nothing that we don't do that does not touch technology. All of our phones are now VoIP phones, which is voice-over-internet protocol, so all of that runs on our networks now. To answer your question directly, we do have adequate support. Could we always use more? Yes. Are we doing the best we can with the resources we have now? I believe so. Those five technicians in the buildings, we have two dedicated directly to the two schools on the hill, the high school and the middle school. We have, of the three remaining, two each have two elementary schools, which they split time 50/50 between, and are, work closely with me and with those building principals to address issues through a ticketing system and so forth. And the third has one, the remaining elementary school, but then also spends half of their time up on the hill as well, because we do have two-thirds of our staff and students at the high school and the middle school, so I have that person float in to support those needs as well. So that's really the design we have. And then the three at the, at the central office, one is specifically for network, one is specifically for our systems and integration, and then the third is for Power School Administration, which is our student information system, which is really the bread and butter of the student data, attendance, grades, and so forth that we have.
Okay. And my, I have another question, and that would be, what percentage, or what is the exact figure, that we are receiving from the DOD Supplemented Impact Aid Grant, since we're already spending, you know, over, well over a million and a half dollars on this account? So how much else is it, how is it supplemented? What is the figure there?
That was actually going to be our next, our next subject on this. I don't know if we have that, have the time.
Oh, okay. So then I'll have one more quick question then. Maybe the travel for administrators and workshops, it went, you know, like a couple of years ago, of course, during COVID, it was $75, I guess, and then it's gone up quite a bit. Where do the people go for, do they go for training, or?
They do go for training. We always try to do online as best we can.
Where, where do, where do the people go for, do they go for training, or?
They do go for training. We always try to do online as best we can. But there are times when we'll have someone, our Power School Administrator will go to Power School University. We're trying to really improve the scheduling to make sure there's more opportunities for students, being efficient with our staffing and so forth. As an example, that would be an opportunity to do that. I don't think we've used this full-line item in, in the past. I've only been here for a year and a half, that's speculation. But as things open up, more and more of the learning is returning to in-person activities, and personally do feel there's real value in hybrid or online learning. There's also additional value in being able to be there face-to-face, ask questions, network, and so forth.
Thank you. Dean?
So do, do we have an inventory, I'm sure we must, of the, of the equipment? I'm gonna call it the data processing equipment, the old term, computers, printers, whatever, in the, in the schools? And I know it's, it's more difficult to do this with that technology than it is with, say, motor vehicles. But do we have a schedule where we can say, okay, we've got this equipment, such-and-such equipment for, for each category? We can expect a usable life of so many years, after which we plan to retire, or we should retire the unit or units. And we're not allowed to keep a fund, where we can sort of toss money in every year like the town can on the whole, to sort of even out any bumps. So it's basically, if I understand it, whatever we need in a given year to upgrade, that's what goes in the budget. And so there're gonna be some heavy years and some light years when we don't have to replace very much of anything. What I'd like to see is, is the ability to somehow coordinate outside the school department with the, with the town as a whole, with the town council, to maybe have a fund like that to even out. Now that, I don't know how that's gonna work, because a lot of times we're just an island when it comes to this. I really do wish we could have a little pot where we could throw money in every year, so that we can, this could be funded, and it would be smooth overall, over the long term. But do we have an inventory like that?
We do. We have an inventory system. It is traditionally, prior to me being here, was a hang, was an addition to our library information system. The decision had been made whenever to use that. It's cataloging books and resources in the library, and technology was being used as that. I had made the decision, and we have now migrated to a new system, which instead of tying to the library information system, ties to our help desk system, so that we can directly connect you as a teacher with what equipment has you been assigned to, what's in your classroom, how often has there been breakage, or an IT help desk ticket request and whatever. And we have a whole history of that now. So the short answer is yes. The additional answer is yes, we have a brand-new system that we've hung onto IT as opposed to the library. And regards to your, your final point, I believe, we are now leasing teacher laptops. And that does buy, and, and we are following a long history of many, many other school districts that have really started to do that, which, as we got in, interest rates were lower, far lower. And over time, that becomes, you know, a way to even out those, those high roads and low roads and so forth. So we're doing that only with teacher laptops, that's it. We do do that with printing equipment, copiers as well. We do not currently do that with student equipment. We do not do that with Promethean boards, some of the other larger ticket items. But I certainly do not disagree, if there's a way that we can predict and plan, and I do have those plans of what we think end-of-life will be, to even that out would be a better budgetary system.
Yeah, that was my, my follow-up. As you, as you sit here, you can say, well, if I refer to certain data, information that I've got, I can tell you that in year such-and-such, we should be looking at
Absolutely.
a large ask, you know, because a lot of stuff's gonna have to be retired, or we'd like to retire. Thank you.
And if you saw the history on kind of that last chunk, the, the total equipment, seven-thirty through seven-thirty-six, those are typically, you know, one of the areas that we zero out, because we're, we're trying to make, all the way back to Bev's question, we're trying to make this equipment last as long as we can, and so forth. And we are, we're doing our due diligence. We had an injection of dollars for Chromebooks during COVID. That will certainly go away. That will not continue. And we've made a real commitment where every student, six through twelve, has a Chromebook with them twenty-four-seven. And we are one-to-one at the elementary level as well, but those do not go home.
Thank you.
Rita, your hand was, is it still up?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. If there's no more questions for this, I am going to propose that the two items that were not covered today will be discussed on Monday. And that should begin to sort of finalize, finalize out our budget conversations. Rita, do you have a question?
I did have a question, Kim, when you, when you finish talking.
Please.
It's a, it's a quick one. It's just the review of the DOD Supplemental Impact Aid. That is not in our budget book, correct?
That's correct.
So could you send that to the board before we review it on Monday?
Certainly.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I was gonna say we should do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. So at this time, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that motion is carried. We will, in a couple of seconds, be going to our next meeting.